Good evening. Today is January 23rd, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the District 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience and those watching online. Director Hume, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Second by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The first item under information, we will receive a report from the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, giving us a literacy update this evening. This report will be presented by Amina Oftal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Amy Petrowski, Director of Student Support Services, Jamie Howe, MTSS Title I Coordinator, and Christine McDonald, Elementary Curriculum Coordinator. Welcome.
Good evening. Board Chair Werb, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share some valuable information around the reading, performance, and instruction of 191 students. This evening, I and members of the CISA team are happy to be here to talk about the work being done to impact how students learn to read and how teachers are supporting students at all levels of performance. Tonight, we'll be speaking about our elementary implementation of curriculum, sharing some data from K through 12, talking about reading interventions for this evening, and talking about special ed literacy interventions. But first, we'll begin with a broad view of how elementary students in 191 have performed, measured by both the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments and district screening of FastBridge A reading. In this first slide, we continue to see progress in the percentage of students meeting grade-level benchmarks. While the bar graph gives us the picture of students by grade, the chart allows you to see how cohorts or groups of the same group of students are progressing and gaining over time. The first slide shows us the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. And the second slide shows us what that progress looks like using our FastBridge A reading assessment for grades two, three, and four, and five. Now Christine McDonald, our elementary coordinator, will share more about the implementation efforts of our foundational literacy instruction with a look at our new curriculums in grades three, four, and five, followed by Jamie Howe, our Title I MTSS coordinator, talking about tools for intervention.
Good evening, Board Chair Werb, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. I am Christine McDonald, the Elementary Curriculum Coordinator. The past four school years, our district has made a concerted effort to bring research-based foundational literacy curriculum into our elementary schools. As a refresher, foundational literacy skills are the building blocks of reading. Phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension are considered the five pillars of literacy. During the 23-24 school year, we fully implemented Hagerty Bridge to Reading in our kindergarten, first, and second grade classrooms. While implementing Hagerty Bridge to Reading in our K-2 classrooms, the Elementary Literacy Steering Committee explored curricular options for a foundational literacy curriculum for our third through fifth grade classrooms. After various meetings with curriculum companies paired with the results from the Minnesota READ Act, we selected Hagerty Bridge to Reading for our third-grade students and Functional Phonics Morphology for our fourth and fifth grade classrooms. This current school year, we are in the second year of Hagerty Bridge to Reading in our primary classrooms while implementing our new curricula in the upper grades. All teachers received training from the specialists from those curriculum companies. Each elementary school and its teachers have a designated literacy coach. The literacy coach provides monthly check-ins, assists with implementation, finds and provides resources to aid in the implementation, and supports teachers with their instruction. Additionally, in partnership with the CISA department, elementary principals are participating in foundational literacy walkthroughs throughout this entire school year. The literacy walkthroughs provide the elementary principals with a CISA partner to aid in the implementation of the curriculum. Also with these walkthroughs, the elementary principals are collecting data to aid the district in ensuring high fidelity of implementation. Just as a refresher, our kindergarten through second grade classrooms are in their second year of Hagerty. In our primary grades, Hagerty Bridge to Reading focuses on building the critical literacy components of phonemic awareness and phonics. Phonemic awareness is the ability to identify, manipulate, and understand the individual sounds within a spoken word. And phonics is the ability to understand the relationship between the sounds in the spoken language and the letters in the written language. Similar to kindergarten through second grade, our third-grade classrooms are also using Hagerty Bridge to Reading. However, in third grade, the instruction and literacy focus is on the literacy pillars of phonics, fluency, and vocabulary. Our third-grade students receive complex phonics instruction with an emphasis on reading and spelling multi-syllabic words to build a baseline of knowledge for morphology. Our fourth and fifth grade classrooms are implementing the morphology curriculum within the Functional Phonics Morphology program. Morphology is the study of the smallest unit of meaning within a word and how these units come together to form new words. Similar units, smaller units of meaning can be found in prefixes, suffixes, and root words. Morphology instruction emphasizes the literacy pillars of vocabulary and comprehension. Our fourth and fifth grade students are receiving explicit morphology instruction to assist in their vocabulary development and the ability to encode and decode and comprehend the meaning of new complex words. On the screen before you are direct quotes from two of our amazing ISD 191 teachers. Jennifer Helman, a third-grade teacher at Vista View, expresses the positive impact of Hagerty Bridge to Reading in her third-grade classroom, while Melanie Bryant, fourth-grade teacher at Sky Oaks, illustrates the power and impact of morphology and its instruction and what it's done for her students. Next, Jamie Howe will be providing information regarding tiered intervention support.
Good evening, Board Chair Werb, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. My name is Jamie Howe, and I am the District MTSS Title I Coordinator. Each of our nine elementary schools have one to three interventionists, depending on the size and need of the school. Interventionists collaborate with classroom teachers at least monthly around data to determine students most in need of additional support. Interventionists work with students in small groups of one to six. Occasionally, interventionists will push into the classroom to support students during Tier One core instruction. Interventionists utilize different tools depending on the student's area of need. SIPs, or Systematic Instruction Phonological Awareness Phonics and Sight Words, has been around the longest and is directly correlated to the collaborative classroom curriculum that was implemented in 2017, 2018. Some interventionists are starting to move away from SIPs towards the University of Florida Literacy Institute, UFLI, intervention that has been recommended by the Minnesota Department of Education. UFLI is also focused on phonemic awareness and phonics. Hagerty Bridge the Gap is a newer resource that is specifically for older students, grades three through 12, that need additional support in just phonemic awareness. This is a great way to fill the gaps for our older students that didn't receive the Hagerty Bridge to Reading instruction in K-2. FastBridge interventions are also available, and these FastBridge intervention materials cover all five pillars of literacy and are mostly used with students who have a specific skill deficit and may only need a shorter burst of interventions. This resource is also used by classroom teachers during what I need or when time.
Coming back to that broad view, you can see the middle school system trends for reading as measured by the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments and the FastBridge A reading. The FastBridge assessments do provide teachers, as Coordinator Howe has mentioned, do provide teachers with specific skill proficiency information and intervention tools to address those very specific skill gaps across all five pillars. Reading data is more limited at the high school, but the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment gives a high-level view of our grade 10 students, the only grade to be assessed in reading over the past four years. I do want to say that on the 2021 year, the participation was about, because we were coming out of the pandemic, was about 50%. After that, our participation rates dramatically increased back up into about 85% to 86% participation, which is actually very, very high for our surrounding metro for participation in the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. The next slide, the ACT results is another way for us to gain information about how well our students are reading. At the high school, we don't necessarily do many assessments except for students who have some severe reading disabilities, as broadly as we do in the elementaries. However, we do have our grade 11 students taking the ACT. And these ACT results move us from grade-level proficiency to take a look at college and career readiness benchmarks. The gold in these graphs represent the percentage of students meeting those college and career benchmarks, and there's two views here. The first one is meeting that the subtest reading skills in the ACT for college and career benchmarks, that percentage. The other one is another measure for complex texts. And what the ACT does is identifies students that are proficient or above proficiency rates in decoding and demonstrating their comprehension of these college and career-level texts that might be more complex. And so that's another indicator for us that our students are on the right track to college and career benchmarks. Reading instruction at the high school and at secondary is very focused on addressing skill gaps for students rather than comprehensive reading instruction, and that aligns with the Minnesota academic standards. We want to make sure that we are addressing those skill gaps and identifying those correctly for students and supporting them in accessing curriculum content as well. And so many of the structures that we have available for our students in the middle school are about accessing content rather than reading comprehension. And so we have quite a few tools available to teachers to allow students to participate in the content, even if they might have difficulty reading the text at grade level. However, we do want to address those skill gaps and continue to provide intervention. Jamie Howe will then show us a little bit about what we're doing in our secondaries to approach intervention.
So both of our middle schools each have two interventionists. Like elementary, our middle school interventionists collaborate with classroom teachers at least monthly to determine students' most in need of support, and they also work with small groups of students of one to six. Middle school interventionists utilize some of the same tools as our elementary schools, including SIPs and FastBridge interventions. They also have an additional resource called Path to Reading Excellence in School Sites, or PRESS, which encompasses materials for all five pillars of literacy. What PRESS offers is an additional diagnostic assessment for each of those five areas, pillars of literacy, so that you can really identify and focus in on a student area of need, and then it provides the intervention materials to go with that. Oh, I'm sorry. Now Director Petrowski will provide information on special ed interventions.
Good evening, Chair Werb, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. My name is Amy Petrowski, and I'm the Director of Student Support Services. SPIRE, Sounds Sensible, and UFLI are targeted evidence-based interventions designed to address the diverse literacy needs of students requiring intensive support. These programs focus on foundational literacy skills, including phonemic awareness, decoding, and fluency, to meet the needs of all of our learners. Pilot programs have been successfully completed, demonstrating measurable growth in students' reading skills. Based on these outcomes, Year One of district-wide implementation is currently launching to provide equitable access to proven literacy interventions. Literacy strategies are intentionally embedded in both general and special education programs, fostering alignment across services and helping to close the achievement gap. Building Wings is customized literacy instruction for complex learners used exclusively in our site-based programs. The program emphasizes functional literacy and communication skills for students with more complex learning needs. Instructional tools include visual supports, augment of communication, and multisensory approaches, ensuring that students receive individualized attention. Students are achieving measurable gains while building confidence through their customized, evidence-based instruction. Supporting teachers and staff through targeted training is essential for delivering effective literacy interventions. We do this through one-to-one coaching, focused data meetings, and conducting fidelity checks to monitor consistency in delivering the interventions. This year's expansion of special education literacy interventions and the support for our staff reflect the district's commitment to ensuring that every student, regardless of their needs and abilities, receive instructions tailored to help them succeed. This focused approach is already demonstrating success and positions us for future growth in special education and literacy outcomes. This chart demonstrates the significant growth of the 42 students who received SPIRE instruction as part of the pilot program in the 23-24 school year. The number of students categorized in low risk increased remarkably, including more students achieving greater proficiency in reading. There was notable decrease in students of our moat at-risk readers. Seven students had their IEP reading goals discontinued, reflecting not only academic growth but also the reduction of need of specialized direct instruction for reading. This pilot program results reflect how targeted special education interventions, such as SPIRE, can help close the achievement gap, build foundational literacy, and promote student success. Last year, Special Education launched another steering committee comprised of our middle school and high school special education teachers. The committee's purpose was to evaluate reading intervention materials that effectively addresses the needs of secondary students requiring literacy support. After a thorough review, the committee selected Language Live, a comprehensive literacy program developed by Dr. Larisa Moats, the lead author of the Letters Training Program. Language Live offers a blended model of explicit teacher-led instruction and personalized digital practice to maximize the student engagement and growth. WinTime literacy model at the middle school levels, students participate in general education literacy courses and receive an additional 30 minutes of individualized instruction focused on the specific literacy needs. Evidence-based tools such as SPIRE, UFLI, and SIPs are used for those interventions. Additional supports include pre- and/or reteaching of strategies to strengthen the understanding and confidence. WinTime meets the needs of their levels with precise individual strategies to close the literacy gaps. These initiatives, along with comprehensive assessment, build on our successes, such as the growth seen, inspire implementation in the elementary grades. They highlight our commitment to high-quality literacy instruction across all student populations, including special education.
That ends our report.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
Thank you, Chair Werb. Thank you for this presentation, and thank you for expanding it to K-12. I appreciated that. That was really helpful. Two questions, and it's on kind of digging into the 15% of K-5 and 8.6% of grade six through eight students receiving literacy intervention. Is that limited based on ratios, student to staffing ratios? Can you elaborate on, is that kind of a rotating classroom where students come in, and then they achieve their goals, and then cycle out?
So yes, that is the model. Once students have met their goals of targeted intervention, we like to rotate them back out and make space for others. Because we only have two intervention staff in the buildings, they really do identify, special education staff are using the literacy interventions as identified by Director Petrowski. And so these interventionists are working primarily with general ed students. And so, but it is very targeted, and it is very limited, and knowing that we are identifying students and then taking them from whatever general ed instruction they have for the small group instruction. Many times, the intervention is probably 15 minutes, if we can do it daily, or three or four times a week, depending on what the area of intervention is. But it is based on staffing and time that is available for them because the interventions are based on small group instruction.
Gotcha. And there was another question in there. So is the, I guess, is the setup the way it is now ideal? Is there more, like if there was greater capacity with staffing, would there be a need that would be felt?
Right. So as we're working collaboratively with the middle school principals, as we're looking at their schedule and looking at how we can do a greater expansion of the win time, we have two things that we're looking at. One is adjusting the daily schedule to make sure that we have that win time available for students. And then the second one is making sure that we're training all of our general ed teachers in the English Language Arts in reading intervention. Teachers who are trained as secondary language arts teachers do not receive the same type of reading intervention or reading instruction training that elementary teachers do, and so they don't really have that strength of pedagogy. We have a great opportunity with the READ Act to provide every single ELA teacher in our district with foundational literacy training provided by the Department of Education. And so we're really excited about that because even our interventionists at our middle schools are really excited about what they're learning in that training because it is far and above just greater depth of phonemic awareness and phonics and the morphology that they just simply didn't have as part of their preparation. And so that has really been beneficial, and so we're excited to see that expand to all of our ELA teachers. When that happens, we'll be able to and continue to connect them to the interventions connected to the FastBridge. The report that comes to the teachers in FastBridge has the student scores, and then it breaks it out into the different pillars and then identifies specific interventions that those teachers can do. And so we really provide them with the tools. We provide them, and we're looking forward to having them complete that READ Act training so that we can do that greater expansion. We'll look at some expansion next year with the changes in the win times at the middle schools. I think the principals, both Principal Helkey and Principal Alston, are very, very committed to expanding the win time structure that they've been using with their sixth grade with the seventh and eighth grade as well.
And then two more questions. That kind of leads into my next question. So we've talked before about empowering each teacher, particular, in this case, I'm thinking secondary, sixth through 12, to be an ML teacher. We used to also talk about ensuring that sixth through 12 teachers see themselves as reading teachers as well. Can you speak to that?
Sure. When we think about the five pillars and we think about teachers in all content areas, the two pillars that really help students to access, when I had talked earlier about accessing the curriculum, the two pillars are vocabulary and comprehension strategies. And so the two things that we continue to support teachers in all the content areas are how do they better teach vocabulary, whether it's pre-teaching or embedding that teaching of vocabulary because that builds the background knowledge for students, to increase the morphology and understanding of the words themselves, but also understanding the content. And then the other one is comprehension strategies. And we've tried to really look at what are those specific strategies? And it may not be quite as big of an initiative anymore because it's so integrated and embedded into some of the things that we do. But I'll give you one example if you are willing to take the time. We've implemented Amplify Science in our middle schools, and it's very aligned to the next-generation science standards. It's very hands-on. It's identified to be phenomenon-based, so students are thinking like scientists. At the same time, wrapped and integrated within that are the technical reading skills. And so in every unit for the Amplify Science are the structures for the teachers to teach the vocabulary, embed the morphology, and identify certain ways that we would pre-teach or guide students through the reading material. So it's embedded within that content already. And when we look for curriculums, we look for curriculums that have those components already embedded within them. And so that's one example of, while it's not, we aren't putting up the banners, every teacher is a teacher of reading. We continue to believe that and operate with that as a value when we are selecting curriculum and training teachers in all the content areas.
Great. Thank you for the refresh. I appreciate that.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you for the presentation and for the work that you're doing. I mean, I think that literacy and reading skills are just so crucial. It's something that everyone will use every day versus, say, you know, students saying, well, I don't know if I need to do algebra, you know, as adults. I mean, so thank you. And so you kind of were talking about expanding the program a bit with some of the different ELA teachers, I guess, first. How long until you kind of have this rolled out kind of to everyone? And the second would be, how many years really do you see or expect to be implementing this to really be able to identify its efficacy? You know, kind of that balance between, is this really working? We need to give it time. We don't want to be just switching from program to program to program. But yet, you know, how long do you really anticipate, you know, really it taking until we kind of analyze and you're looking at the efficacy?
One of the things that we were able to share with the board over the last couple of years is the immediate results for students when we are really focused on that high-quality implementation. And so when we looked at our pilot data, we were able to see right away with students with that small pilot group of teachers who were very focused on that. Last year, when we shared our implementation data, when we did widespread implementation, we were able to demonstrate the, really the one-year gains that we were able to see in classrooms where we were able to document high-quality fidelity to the program. And so when we talk about how long before we see that long-term efficacy, it really is probably two to three years of ongoing support, not for the students, because the students get it, the students do it. It's building those structures for our staff and for the adults in the system and making sure that we are really continuing to support them as they grow in knowing what the curriculum lessons are, being able to adapt those lessons, being able to use the assessments to shift and adapt their instruction to the needs of the particular students, and then adjust the instruction and the lessons and collaborate with the other providers in the building for students who may have additional needs. And sometimes those structures are the ones that take the longest amount of time, and which is why when Coordinator McDonald talks about each principal having a partner from CISA, we really are committed to empowering our principals to be the ones that are doing those walkthroughs. to be the ones that are doing those walkthroughs and assisting and supporting their teachers in doing that implementation. And so the answer to your question is probably, as we look at our second year of full implementation of K-2, we're really looking forward to seeing those spring results and how well our teachers now in their second year are working towards those goals and knowing that it's the first year for our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers to do those things. And they are so committed. They are so engaged. They see the need for wanting to use these curriculums and address these foundational skills that they themselves have identified, that, you know, I really see that, that high level of engagement for them. But it does take, it does take time.
Yep. Yep. Definitely to be expected and great to hear that, yeah, with that engagement. Some of the excitement is always great to then, you know, it gets everybody excited. Including the students. Thank you.
Thanks. I just have one quick question myself relating to the walkthroughs that you talked about with the principals at the elementary level. You discussed them collecting data. So I was curious about what that involved. Like, how are they collecting that data? Where's that data going? Who's managing that?
So together, the CISA department and the elementary principals created the literacy walkthroughs and what we were specifically going to be looking for, based on where we are in the implementation. So we worked closely with the curriculum companies to identify what should we be seeing? And how, what should the principals be seeing in the classrooms, both from the instructional aspect and the student aspect, in the fall of year one of implementation and then the winter and spring? And so together with that information from these companies, we created our literacy walkthrough. And it is looking at things very basic as are we seeing the, the tools and resources provided by the curriculum actively being used in the classroom, both with the teachers and the students? We're looking at active engagement, both with the teachers and students, and are teachers providing explicit feedback to the students' learning in that moment? And then also, we're looking at the structure of the lessons. Are we seeing all important components of the lesson being delivered into the classrooms? So again, and we're looking at other items as well that my brain is not coming up with right now. But we're using that data again. It's not to look at an individual teacher of what you are or not doing, but it's to look at, we're gathering the data to look at what is working in year one and what is missing and how as, as a district, do we provide that professional development to teachers to continue to strengthen their instructional strategies in their classroom?
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you. Really appreciate the presentation. I just love hearing about all the work we're doing in our district with literacy. So keep up the good work. Thank you. Next on our agenda is to receive a report about the fiscal year 2025 revised budget from Tyler Denny, Director of Finance. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Worb, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Tonight I will present the fiscal year 2025 revised budget. Overview of tonight's presentation, provide the board and community with updated financial information and provide a recommendation to the board for approval of the FY 2025 revised budget. Tonight, we will answer these questions. Where does district funding come from? What restrictions are there on district spending? How does the district spend its money? And what's the current situation? So where does district funding come from? General fund revenue is just below $162 million. The largest source of revenue is from the state general and categorical aid at $111 million or 69%. The graph on this slide shows the gap in state funding. The orange line is the actual formula allowance. The blue line is the formula if it was adjusted for inflation. Some of the district's funding has restrictions. The general fund capital is annual, is the annual allocation that can only be used for approved personnel and equipment per state statute. Title funds is federal money designated for specific purposes such as needs associated with high poverty rates. The technology levy is specifically for technology personnel and equipment. And then community education and food and nutrition funds are also separate. $159 million in general fund expenditures by object dimension or type of expense. 76% of our budget is on people. 24% is on supplies, facilities, contracted services. The same general fund expenditures, but by program dimension or by purpose. 76% of the budget is on instruction and instructional support. General fund staff by bargaining group. Largest group, 70% or $79.6 million is for teachers. A look at the FY 25 budget for all of the funds. The audited fund balance for last year plus $217.5 million in revenue minus $215.9 million in expenses brings us to approximately $88.7 million in total fund balance at the end of fiscal year 25. The current situation for the general fund, we are estimating a $2.5 million surplus, which would bring the fund balance percentage to 24.91%. Other resources included in the presentation are linked on this slide. The budget unit summary report and the staffing budget by budget unit is also included. So next steps later tonight, there will be a recommendation to approve the FY 2025 budget revision. And then we will begin budgeting, we will begin building the FY 26 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
Yeah, on, I think it's the, maybe the next to last slide, the comparative summary slide. I was noticing that revenue was up over the adopted budget by about $7 million. Wonder if you could talk a little bit about, I mean, that's great, but if you could talk a little bit about how that happens?
Yep. So some of that is catching up for things like state special ed aid. So there was increases to that and we were under-budgeted for that for the last couple of years. So the state does provide that, a best guess. So we are increasing that substantially to get more in line with the historical revenue there. Same thing with the investment earnings as well. We've typically been under-budgeted and we're going to bring that up a little bit to be more in line with historical actuals on that. There is a couple new funding streams that we did not have in the budget related to the REED Act. That was about like a half a million. I think those were the biggest pieces.
Okay. Thank you. And then on the, I don't remember which slide it was, but there were links to the specific, I think, budget unit. And I noticed there were quite a few that had some pretty significant, like $240,000, $400,000 on some of the budget lines as far as the elementary sub-budget is up by about $240,000, it looked like. The middle school general instructional budget is under by about $400,000. If you could talk a little bit about, again, kind of how those things happen. I know it's hard to predict a year out sometimes, but...
Yeah. So specifically for the sub-budget, that is all related to the history of what we're actually spending and then what we're currently spending. So last year, we ended up over-budget for subs and the trend has been that that budget has increased substantially over the last few years.
Sure.
So we had, we had to add more money to make sure that we had the budget to cover that. And then there's also the, the effects of contract negotiations and shifts in personnel since we did the adopted budget.
Sure. Thank you. I think from my perspective in my day job, yes, you make a budget and things change over the course of a year and that's why we have this adoptive, this revised budget process. So thank you for that. That's all I had.
Anyone else? Thank you for your report. Lastly, are there any reports from board members regarding board committees, appointments, and school assignments from last year's assignments? New board assignments for 2025 will be up for approval later this evening as part of our consent agenda.
It's not a specific, you go ahead, but...
Yeah. So ISD Intermediate District 917 met last Tuesday, which, not this past Tuesday, but the Tuesday before, the 14th, it was the 14th. And we met a week later just so that we could then have our organizational meeting with every, all the decisions that the member districts had gone through. So they underwent their, underwent our organizational meeting. We have a new board chair, Tom Bennett from Bloomington Schools, and, and then approved, kind of like similarly to what our district approves. You approve your calendar, you approve, you know, meetings and, and different representatives for different assignments. And so that was really the bulk of the board meeting. And then we're reviewing a few routine policies. So not a whole lot to report from 917 for this last month, but maybe more coming.
Is there any other reports?
I was just going to say, it's not a committee assignment, but Directors Anderson and Mickelson and I and Dr. Battle attended the Minnesota School Board Association Annual Conference last Thursday and Friday. And I thought it was one of the better ones that I've been able to attend. I think for me, the highlight was definitely, we had the, an opening speaker, Mickey Smith Jr. on Thursday morning, who was incredible. He was, really talked a lot about music and the impacts on students and student achievement. It was really, really good. And then the closing session was, often when I've been to these, I've said, either the opening speaker or the closing speaker is really good. And this year, I thought they were both just really, really outstanding. It was Hamish Brewer, who was originally from New Zealand. He's a principal and goes, and I think from Virginia? I think he's a principal in Virginia at a middle school and talked a lot about turning, turning schools around and really the impact that a principal can have on the students in their building. So both were really outstanding and great sessions. And it was just, it was, I think it was maybe one of the larger MSBA conferences I can remember, certainly the largest since the pandemic. I think the combination of a few more years out from the pandemic and a lot of new school board members were elected across the state last year. So definitely, as always, recommend that if you're able to go, you should. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes the information portion of our meeting. We will now move to the business portion of our meeting. We will start by approving the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved to, for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent items? If, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Alt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The first item under new business is to consider approval of the 2025-26 Secondary Course Catalog presented by Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent. Welcome.
Thanks, Chair Worb. Superintendent Battle, members of the board, good evening. I'm here to seek formal approval of the Secondary Course Catalog for the 2025-26 Secondary Course Catalog with the additions, deletions, and changes outlined in the board packet materials. The board might recall, Principal Sandoval and I presented a more detailed description of some of those changes at the January 9, 2025 meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the Secondary Course Catalog as presented in the board materials?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Chair.
The next item under new business is to approve the FY 2025 revised budget presented by Tyler Denny, Director of Finance. Welcome back, Director Denny.
Good evening. Each fiscal year, the budget is revised to reflect the most current information available with respect to revenues and expenditures. This recommendation formally recognizes these amendments, the revisions, by incorporating them into the budget document. Revisions have been made in all governmental funds. The recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the 2024-25 revised budget, providing all funds revenues of $217,519,765 and all funds expenditures of $215,865,457.
Is there a motion to approve the FY 25 revised budget?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. This concludes new business. Next on our agenda is a work session to discuss the use of funds from the sale of Diamond Head Outlot and a long-term facility planning update. I move that we take a brief recess and return to this agenda item at 7:25. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Chester. Moved by myself and seconded by Director Chester. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Please return to the dais at 7:25 to begin the work session.
Notwithstanding Minnesota Statute, Section 123B dot five one subdivision four, paragraph B, or any law to the contrary, any remaining net proceeds received by the district in connection with a lease of real property that is not needed for school purposes or part of the property that is not needed for school purposes as permitted under Minnesota Statute, Section 123B dot five one subdivision four, paragraph A, and with the school, the school board of independent school district number one ninety-one, Burnsville Egan Savage, specifically identified in the district's open facilities action plan, may be deposited in the district's general unrestricted fund following the deposit of such proceeds as required under Minnesota Statute, Section 123B dot five one subdivision four, paragraph Notwithstanding Minnesota Statute, Section 123B dot five one subdivision six, paragraph C to F, or any law to the contrary, any remaining proceeds of the sale or exchange of school buildings or real property of independent school district number one ninety-one, Burnsville even Egan Savage specifically identified in the district's open facilities action plan, may be deposited in the district's general unrestricted fund following application of such proceeds as required under Minnesota Statute, Section 123B dot five one subdivision, subdivision six, paragraph six. That was a lot of words. So that was, that's the exemption. And what we are tasked to do is to determine the funds from the outlot, where are we going to assign them? Are they going to, we have three different options from my understanding is we can commit them to facilities, or we can commit them to programming in facilities, or we can do just programming.
Is there a fourth option of we wait until we have more funding from the other two pending sales?
I don't believe that should.
So it's, since we have the money, right, since we have the money right now in our It's going to be beneficial to have those funds designated so that in the next year or so, you know, we are all clear and on the same page about what the board wants those funds used for. For example, we know we're going into negotiations.
Right.
So we know that the nine hundred thousand dollars from Diamond Head, we want to set aside for something specific. And to do that now, I would argue, sets us up for success.
But what we're not doing is currently is deciding exactly how it's being spent. That's, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
No, 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 no. Because it's, it's really, it's more about the umbrella, right? What's the
The bucket that it's going.
What's the big bucket that it's going to go into? We commit it and then, you know, Dr. Battle and her staff can come forward when they finish their research and input sessions, et cetera, et cetera.
And I also want to clarify
I guess I thought we had done that at the October meeting. Maybe we just talked about doing that and this is the follow-up from that.
Yeah. We'd never made a clear decision.
Right, right.
But that we also want to probably clarify too, that we can uncommit after we commit it. Like if we, if we say, hey, we're going to commit it to facilities, oh, wait, we want to do some programming. Okay, we're going to uncommit this and now put it towards some program.
We have the right to make a decision and we have the right to change our mind.
Yes, yes.
Very important.
Yes. And if I may, can I, can I add? So because this kind of came up at the last minute, Dr. Battle was kind enough to share speaking points that she presented to the legislature that I think kind of provide additional context to the general conversation. And maybe what we can do after the board meeting is have those added to board book just so that we're, we're, you know, open and transparent about that. But basically, I'm not going to read all of it, but the primary purpose for this exemption would be for the board to be able to use the funds in a way that best meets our local needs. It puts control in the local community through the school board. Oh, before that, sorry. The exemption would allow any proceeds of the sale beyond what's required to pay off the building's existing debt to be transferred to the district's unassigned general fund and used for programming expenses instead of only for capital expenditures. So that's where we have the legislature hearing from us, programming or capital facilities, right?
Right, right.
And to Chair Wurbs' point, right, the, the three options are one, the other, or both.
Right.
Right.
Because if we didn't seek the exemption, we would have only been able to commit it to capital.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Once all the debt had been paid.
Yes. Well, I would suggest, just to get the conversation started, that we just look at capital initially. Because we know that we also have Metcalf and Sutrel coming.
Right.
Ostensibly MW at some point, too.
And I would say that because those are actual total sale of whole buildings in which we had debt, that's where the legislative exemption fell versus the sale of the outlots, which we wouldn't, wouldn't be part of the legislative exemption.
Correct, correct, yep. And that's also where we had flexibility to begin with anyway, so.
Right, right.
Gotcha.
Right.
Okay.
I guess my question would be, why wouldn't we want to continue to give ourselves flexibility to be able to say capital or programming?
Because the resolution needs to be specific purpose and a specific amount for that purpose. I mean, I guess, you know.
I mean, she did say that was one of the options was to do both.
Right, yep.
But then we just had to decide the amount.
Exactly, yes, exactly.
Right.
But if there's going to be other funds coming in
We hope, yeah.
In theory, right? You could put this in facilities, the next batch, so to speak, could go to both or the other.
And devil's advocate, since this is not coming out of a building, one could argue that this might be where we place funds for programming because building money tends to want to stay in building money.
That was my exact thought. You just said it first, but that's kind of what my thought, my line of thinking was because this was not a proceeds from a building sale, that maybe it should be put into programming. That's my opinion.
And it's not such a significant amount that like from the discussion last year about, well, you know, it's going to, we're going to expand and get all these great big programs that aren't sustainable because what happens when the money runs out, that this is, you know, this is a good way to be able to tweak some, you know, good investment that could go a long time and, yeah, to put it to our programming. At least initially. Director Chester, I see you.
Pardon me, it's wondering because of the, because we did seek the legislative exemption for the sale of the buildings, that it'd be good to have some flexibility in terms of, because it is a larger pot of money from the sale of buildings, that some of it is, that it is some for capital, some for program in that sense, because that then validates the reason we went after the exemption in the first place.
Right.
With this on with a little more flexibility and a smaller pot, do, you know, I, I like the idea of having some sort of a restriction to it. And then wondering if, if we need to be more, if we need to be more specific in the name of the resolution, that this is a resolution for the commitment of funds from the sale of the outlot versus the sale of whole buildings? Because would we have another resolution after the sale of the buildings are done?
We'll have a resolution each time.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, because I thought I heard you say that we're only talking tonight specifically about the outlot, which to me means we will have more discussions
Right.
when the day comes that we get the money.
And then, so then that would be more named, because like right now, the title is just commitment of funds. So like we would have it be more
Commitment of funds from Diamond Head.
Specific.
Right, right.
Named, okay.
So you saying the second whereas doesn't apply?
Yeah, with the sale of the outlots, that does not apply.
An exemption for.
Right, right. This is, this is preemptive for the next resolutions, but not this.
Right, right, gotcha.
Yeah.
I always like holding money and temporarily restricted because then it's, you can't quite touch it.
I tend to agree that we have the legislative exemption and the building sale might be where we want to use it. Yeah, and perhaps we just go with programming, to your point.
And I mean, kind of what's already been discussed is the fact that you put in a programming, it doesn't mean that if a significant need suddenly pops up, it has to stay in programming. The board does retain some of that ability to reassess. So it's, it's not like we're completely hemmed in.
And we know that Dr. Battle and her team are already working on gathering input from the community on a variety of subjects, so more to come on that point.
For programming or facilities?
Facilities.
Yep.
I guess
So, I'm sorry, just want to clarify. So because this particular sale did not require the exemption, do we need to use a different resolution?
I would have to ask the attorney, I was just following up on another point. Because it's limited to the outlot, exemption has nothing to do with it.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Right, but I think we still need to have a resolution.
Yes, yep, I agree. I just say we need to have that section. Yes, no, I'm, no, I'm saying, but the, the resolution that's in here would need to be revised because it's stating
Oh, because
received an exemption, we don't need, right.
For that specific.
That first one might just be removed.
And this is a draft, so our attorney has to give us a resolution.
Okay, yep.
This example is not from our attorney.
Perfect.
I guess if we go the programming route, which I'm a little wiffy on, which is ironic given how the conversation started. I would want at some point, and I think this is probably assumed, but I just want to say it out loud, that we would get information specifically about what that money is being used for as part of, if we're saying the money is for programming, I want to know what programming it's paying for.
It won't come out of committed.
Right.
Without board action.
There you go. That's what I wanted to check.
Yes, yep. It's not like it's, it's there and then it just gets fed down.
It would have to be board approval before it gets used.
Excellent.
I mean, but to that, though, I mean, we, we've talked about there's like facilities, there's going to be a list of projects, is there something that exists for programming?
Right.
Yep, and that was also, I'll pull that up.
Always, always.
Programming aligned with the district's community-driven priorities, for example, pre-K through grade twelve pathways model, which is designed to support each student in finding their passion and preparing them for success and after graduation. Early literacy programming, which is foundational to our core work. So that was presented to the legislature.
Exactly, before the REACT was passed.
Before the REACT was passed, yes. So I, I think we have some breadcrumbs.
Okay, I can support
Programming.
Policy route if that, or the programming route, if that, one of those P words. If others agree.
Yeah.
Knowing that we have, hopefully, presumably have more pots of money coming. Hopefully this spring.
So are we in agreement, then we will move forward with a resolution to commit it to programming? Okay?
Yep.
To our attorney.
Okay.
For the amount, the whole nine hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's cleaner and easier.
And we'll just add those speaking points to board book after tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
Since I read them, yeah.
Okay, thank you all for your input into this discussion. We are now going to shift to the second item on our agenda under our work session, which will be to hear a long-term facility planning update from Superintendent Battle and Executive Director of Administrative Services, Stacy Solvine. Dr. Battle will be starting this off.
Thank you, Chair Wurbs and Directors of the Board. The Board requested an update on the facilities, I believe, the last, was it November?
October.
November seventh was the last update. Also requests to make sure we get our new board members updated, so if you're listening and board members, this is a recap of that November presentation, so ask questions. And with that, I will turn it over to Stacy Solvine, and at the end, we'll give you an update. We had shared in November that we would be gathering more data, and so we'll give you an update. That's really the main update. Stacy? You want me to do it, since you did it November seventh?
No, I didn't do it November seventh. You and Dave Lake did.
Oh, that's right, Dave. He had the LTFM, yes.
I'm assuming there's a PowerPoint.
Uh-oh, what's going on?
It escaped.
Okay.
There we go.
There it is. Yeah, because he did the LTFM part.
All right.
This is more than a recap, it is the November seventh presentation for you folks. Just to be very clear, so some of this will sound very familiar. Why are we having this discussion? Because at the time, in November, we had recent conversations, closed sessions on safety and security, some work sessions to discuss the use of open facility sales proceeds such as the outlot, which you were following up on today, as well as Metcalf Middle and Sutrel Elementary with anticipated sales in July of two thousand twenty-five. This presentation is of November seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Our desire is to take a planful, comprehensive approach to addressing these and other facility needs. One ninety-one facility should address changing student needs and programming in a fashion that is welcoming, safe, and efficiently uses one-time capital expenses to reduce ongoing and efficient operational expenses, often referred to as overhead. So the goal is to identify and prioritize district needs for today in a manner that provides flexibility for the future. Important phrase because it isn't uncommon to where building leads often will say, well, I want to move this to here and that to there, and we end up spending money to make those changes. And they're really meant to address issues in the now versus, as we're looking at this, hopefully providing flexibility for twenty to twenty-five years. Now, I say twenty, twenty-five years, that's becoming a really long time, both in technology and in education. A lot of things can happen within that timeframe, but as much as possible, if we are looking towards the horizon in our planning, that should allow us a lot of flexibility and options for future school boards. We want to leverage our resources to maximize the use and efficacy of one ninety-one facilities. We are committed to students. We are committed to student learning and offering the best possible learning environments and opportunities. So we also want to create welcoming and safe building and spaces, and we want to make sure that we're engaging our community in this process and hearing from any voices. An open and transparent communication and decision-making process, cost-effective use of our facilities and resources, and as much as possible, reduce inequities in racially or socially economically identifiable schools. Some initial list of identified safety and facility updates, structural changes to several front entrances, and I want to make sure that it's clear, this is just from observations from folks like David and myself, some principal comments. So some of this, again, is just very anecdotal and very preliminary as we were bringing this forward. Structural improvements for open concept buildings, redesigned parking, bus drop-off and parent pickup zones, dedicated instructional spaces and secure entrances for early childhood at eight buildings, and enterprise infrastructure. Initial list of identified safety and facility updates would be looking at structural changes to several front entrances to make sure that they are welcoming, intuitive, support traffic flow that is safe for all pedestrians and students and regulated, and a regulated environment. Security having multiple layers, a line of vision and communication, and efficiency, reduce the need for multiple dedicated personnel. Some of our sites, just to give examples on when it comes to pickup and dismissal, we are put, having staff walk around and dropping traffic cones, and that's not good use of our personnel or time when we can restructure it, again, with one-time money, so we don't have to keep doing that for a hundred and seventy days each year of the year. Initial list of safety and facility updates, structural improvements for open concept buildings. Just so you were, when I describe an open concept building, those are buildings that were meant to, well, to be open and to feel like everybody was a part of a larger community and you hear the hustle and the bustle and everybody feels a part of something. Problem with an open concept building is you hear the hustle and the bustle and everything is going on and it's very hard to really focus. So we are also looking within that, evaluate the open concept buildings for our return on investment. Install floor-to-ceiling walls in buildings where we have three-quarter walls. So if you look at a number of our round buildings, for examples, the wall only goes up so high, we have some plastic, it's not plastic, really plastic, I guess, that's not the word, plexiglass that is above often, but it isn't a secure site or secure location. Also installing classroom doors in buildings that were also designed for open concept. And these were all preliminary. Anybody walking into a building pretty much quickly could say, "Uftah," so, and, and come up with those. So initial list of identified safety and facility updates, several sites, student pickup zones were never designed for the level of traffic that they are experiencing. It used to be where you may had a handful of families where, you know, the, the parents, one of the parents may be driving right by the school on their way to work, it just wasn't inconvenient and the kids got uplifted. So it was random. You may have five families, whatever, it's very flexible. Now, we have people lined up in the street to pick up and drop off. It is, we have more parents picking up and dropping off than we have buses at the site in most cases. Initial list of safety and facility updates, again, looking at our early childhood programming, our VPK that's in the buildings, our Project Kids. So again, when the buildings were initially designed, they were designed for K five, K six at the time. Now we have a lot more primary and early childhood programming that's occurring at these buildings. They take up space as well. Our kindergarten classrooms typically have a restroom in them. You add VPK classrooms, well, the little ones there also need to use the restroom and they need to use it now. But we don't have that many classrooms in the buildings that have restrooms available. Program hours don't always align with our K five programming, especially with the Project Kids, that's before-school and after-school programming. So that, how do we address keeping those buildings secure? Parents are secure in bringing the students in and feeling that the students are safe without needing to have multiple entrances open. And then providing appropriate instructional spaces, including primary age bathrooms and other dedicated secure entrances. And then addressing enterprise infrastructure, it's pretty much, this is all of the internet, the wiring, the security, the cameras, the communication, all of the things that are behind the walls to support everything else that's going on. Okay? Some other unvetted possibilities that have been shared by staff, our MIRAS Center needs updating. And again, the portion that really needs the updating are the portions in which most folks don't even see. If you were to get up into the rafters and see where our lighting and our electrical and the wiring, you would be down real quick. Athletic field upgrades. We have some major issues with our athletic fields. We have a really good football field, but we have some other issues with a lot of our other spaces. It doesn't help having a natural pipeline that runs under them, that needs to be updated every about twenty years and, and fixed. Growing pathway programming at our high school, future enrollment and instructional capacity and dated infrastructure inefficiencies in different areas. So how do we normally pay for these projects? Normally, we would play, pay for a lot of them through our long-term facility maintenance, often you'll hear it as LTFM, and they are in a ten-year cycle to where we prioritize projects and plan for them, and it's a local levy, so we need to replace a roof, we need to replace a boiler, we need to replace carpeting or flooring. Things that are already existing in place, we can use LTFM money to replace it. It's not new walls, it's not new structures, it's replacement of structures, okay? Some projects are unexpected. That can be because of enrollment shifts, special needs. We have a student that moves into the district, we move a focus program, and we may have bathroom needs, different things that just require this. Breakdowns and malfunctions. Earlier this fall, we had a water line break at Eagle Ridge that took some major construction to have to get that repaired, and, you know, those are unexpected. And we do have a deductible on our insurance that we have to reach, so there's costs and money that comes out first before we even get claim reimbursement. And then also changing programming pressures. So some major projects are outside the scope of LTFM, such as significant structural changes, which may take additional steps for, in development. So we pay for the different projects through, again, LTFM, our annual operations department budget, if it's a fairly, well, inexpensive, I guess is all relative to your budget size, but fairly inexpensive. Our Safe Schools budget can be used and coded for some different projects that fall under those requirements. Special education often will pick up the bill for focus program needs, reassigning our unassigned funds, and then also you have the option for like bond referendums. So this was our next step slide in November, and we are still in this portion that is dark. So in the next three to four months, we will gather more information on potential facility needs that align with our purpose. And again, that we address the purpose at the beginning piece. So in November, David and I walked through all of the buildings with administrators and our directors, and I mean, what does that door open? Where does that go? What's in here? What are we finding over here? So we did that in every one of the buildings. Amy Petrowski and Jason Sellers, we walked Diamond Head because they both have programings here, and then we met with Kevin Kleiner to discuss our athletic fields and different things going on there. So we got the initial list of needs from our administrators, and now we are scheduling meetings with the BLTs at each of the sites. So we are meeting with the BLTs, which is comprised of the teachers as well as the administrator at each site, to review our initial finding of needs and to ask them if they have other needs that may not be represented on our, our list, okay? We are scheduled through the end of February, we still have three more buildings that need to be scheduled, and we are working with Kevin to bring in different folks that have connections with our athletic program to hear from the community as to what their feeling their needs are as well, okay? So what we're anticipating is if everything is scheduled correctly, come late March, we will come back to you with an exhaustive needs assessment list. Not solutions, just Not solutions, just needs, and it's going to be extensive, just with what we are gathering up at this point. At that point, we will move into the next phase to say, okay, here's everything that we have needs, guidance a little bit on the scope, on how you, on what you would like as far as, well, let's figure out different ways to address all of the needs. Or you may try to limit that, which will then guide us in developing a guiding change document. We want to make sure that we're not wasting time where we're bringing in a guy, this, an options team that will look through a number of different options, because they need to know the scope of their work. So, next step, once we're done, we'll bring to you a needs assessment, just an exhaustive list. We will look for some guidance as to how much of this you want to try to tackle, or if you just want to say, give us your best shot, whatever, that discussion, you'll, you'll have a little bit better idea once we bring that list to you. And then from there, we'll start moving into the community input, discussing different options, what that might look like. As we were looking at the different buildings through this process, don't, don't start landing on any options that you think it may be, because there is a lot of potential and a lot of different ways of looking at some of these things to address our needs. And when we start doing cost analysis and when we start looking at the pros and the cons, and trying to address multiple issues at the same time, that really, I don't want to just fix one issue at one location and then still have other issues outstanding or create a hardship, a pinch point someplace else. We want to try to figure out, how can we solve multiple issues in a cost-effective way that will be flexible for the next 20 to 25 years? Nothing to it.
With that, that's our update and recap.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
New board members, like drinking water from the fire hose.
That was helpful. Thank you.
Will there be some sort of identifiers in that list, you know, that'll go, we, you know, like if there's, not necessarily ranking, but, you know?
Oh, no.
Red, yellow, green, like, like the roof is going to cave in here, this should probably be elevated a little bit.
If we do a roof type of thing, that would fall under LTFM.
Okay.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to put my thumb on the scale as saying you really should do X.
Yeah.
Because if we're going to, you know, we're, at this point in time, we're just, everybody just, I don't care what it is. We've had stuff like, can we get that wall repainted? Okay, fine, we'll put it on the list, but that isn't really, we're looking at the bigger things, you know? But I want to really leave it open for once we do have a design team and we're putting them into place with a guiding change document, and as long as they're meeting the parameters and the, and the desired outcomes and the restriction pieces, that they really have a lot of flexibility to say, you know, if we're looking at efficiency, if we're looking at a return on our investment, if we're looking at meeting multiple needs, that group will bring you back options in which they feel hits all of those different points, and then you can choose from those options and decide at that point. I really want to make sure that we're not tipping the scale on this.
So, help clarify for me, please, Stacy. Because as, as you were sharing, you know, reviewing this, you know, the process with us again, I was thinking about, okay, efficiencies and impact. At what point in the process would an, an assessment of impact for each of the items on the list come in? Would it come in the initial list or would it come through the design team?
Come through the design team.
The design team, okay.
The design team would say, okay, here are our recommendations and why, and potentially the implications for them, or what problems we're trying to solve with them. Because when we're bringing forward the options, you know, we, we will have several stages to where the design team is going out and seeking it, seeking input for refinement, and they're going to need to be able to speak to each of those options and see which ones become more and more viable through that input and refinement process. So again, it's, my next step is a needs assessment. What I'm going to be asking for you at that point is, how much are you willing to bite off? I mean, are you saying, you know what, this is comprehensive, we want it to go all comprehensive? I don't know. You may say, we want to keep this limited, where can we try to do small amounts over time? There's going to need to be some guidance of the scope of work for your design team. That's really what's going to come down to.
And I guess, I guess just getting, for me, just getting a list may not be adequate to, to help evaluate scope. I mean, it's, it's like the why be, the why behind it.
Yeah, so it's like, this is on the list because of this.
Right. And, and, and it ticks off getting into the weeds, I'm sorry, but, you know, in terms of impact, because I think that's kind of what we're looking for, right? How broad is the impact on learning, on access, on safety? I mean.
As for the example, Stacy mentioned the pre-K, so with the board gives direct, we need to upgrade all the bathrooms. You, you know the impact that will be. Like he said, they need to go now, they don't have to walk down the hall. So is that kind of the rationale? This is the impact. If you do this, then that will limit for pre-K, whatever it is, the exterior, the parking, the impact will be, we won't have staff utilizing their time to put out cones anymore, they could be doing other activities, is that what? I guess I'm asking for your definition of impact.
Well, impact is, is, is what's the significance of this change to the program or the school? Whether, and, and in terms of.
Why they identified it as a need?
Right. Why have they identified it as a need? How many students are we talking about? How many families are we talking about? Not, depending on the item.
How much staff time?
How much staff time?
Is this list going to be evaluated before it gets to the board?
Nothing.
No.
I have no desire to evaluate any of the needs assessment, because you are getting the raw information completely open. If I'm going to have community input and follow the process that we identified at the beginning of this presentation, I'm not going to trim the list. I'm not going to put my priorities on this. I'm giving you an exhaustive list, and you will see redundancies in much of this. We will break it down for that. But again, I bring this back to also falling in love with ideas that we haven't even put on the table yet, because as we were walking this, and that's, it's hard for me, and I'll be very honest with this, not to come up with different ways of solving what I'm seeing.
Oh, sure, sure.
You know, it just, and, and I will let you know, there are many viable options that I'm pretty confident that at this point in time, nobody is even considering, but again, I do not want to put my thumb on the scale. I want to let the design team work through this process. What I'm really going to be looking for when I come back is, more than like, how much are you willing to spend and how do you want to go about that? Because if you tell me I have a budget of X amount of dollars, when we take it back to the design team, that's going to be, we may come back and say, we're only going to be able to address this and this, and we believe these are our priorities.
And that's outside of other funding that could solve these things?
That's right.
So then, it, whether before Stacy comes back or after, I believe we'll want to have a conversation about short and long-term goals. Because right now, you know, when we talk about enrollment, it's declining to flat. We have money coming to us from the buildings and we need to think about this board and future boards and the needs of the, of the school 20, 25 years. Exactly, exactly, and, and not be short-sighted.
I, I will put out one thing. Outside of our existing open facilities, I do not think we are at a place with our Well, let me borrow a phrase, to jettison any other property after our current vacancies or to possibly even necessarily close unless we do some major redesign of other locations. We, we lost nearly 4,000 students before we closed three buildings. You know, even our, over the next 10 years, it's anticipated we may lose 1,000. Burnsville in our area is pretty landlocked. I'm, I'm reaching my threshold of comfort. So outside of our current open facilities, I'm okay with all of that. I would be cautious if you're kind of thinking along that line.
No, no, no. I, no, I'm just thinking with the footprint that we have, the existing footprint.
Okay.
And, and knowing that, being fairly hopeful that, you know, eventually enrollment will, you know, I mean, we know demographics, we've heard from the, the demographer, how do we weigh, you know, the potential need for an addition to a school at some point down the road? Do we make a decision now and say, no, we're going to use all of our building for making this up? Use all of the, the proceeds that we have for right now and know that we're setting up the future board to have to go out for a bond? You know, like, we have to be respectful of both realities.
Sure. Right. And this is about at least 10, if not 100, steps down the road, what I'm about to say, but the revised budget that we approved this evening has a pretty healthy unassigned fund balance that I think we would want to at least take a look at before going for a bond.
I'm not even talking about a bond now.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
Gotcha, and you said that, yep.
Five years from now, whenever it might be.
But the 900, the 900,000 is in that. I mean, that's why we're at 24% in addition to the REIT Act, which is.
That's only 900,000, that's not.
Yeah, it's.
39 million.
39 million, yeah.
That might be in restricted.
And I didn't think, yeah.
But we've never been at 24% to your point.
We were, I think, at 5 or 6% when I joined the board.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And the best.
Board policy is 8% for our board members.
Minimum, right?
For minimum, yeah.
Minimum.
Yeah, we don't want to ever get down there.
You don't want to be, minimum of 8%.
So just wanted to point out, you know, there's, like, somewhere in this process, we need to figure out where we are short-term and long-term with our investments.
Completely agree.
I mean, I could just say that I'm not about like, oh, we have it in our parking lot, I'll spend it all. I'm, no.
Right. I agree. Also, at a time of declining enrollment for 15 years, I don't know, want to go out for a bond to say, well, I want to spend 20 million, 10, 10, 20, whatever the number, millions of dollars on improvements. So that's, that's my hesitancy, is until enrollment is moving in a different direction, I'd be hesitant to go out for a bond, is my only point.
Living within our means.
Yes. Well, okay. We'll look forward to being presented with a list.
Remind me of the timeline of when, like, next steps might, in the coming months.
I'm looking at probably the, the end of March, the second meeting in March, to be able to bring you something along that line.
Okay.
Again, that, for, for us, that will allow at least initial input from the administrators, your building leadership teams, our athletics, hopefully the community for like boosters, some coaches, different folks along those lines to provide some feedback on our athletic Then we'll bring you the long list and try to figure out the best way to organize this, you know? If I'm looking at entrance, front entrance safety, I may just show, these are the different buildings that have the highest need for front entrance areas or, or, you know, something along that. I don't really know yet the best way of organizing the presentation for you, because what I'm hearing is, is this a one-off or is this like everywhere, you know, kind of a deal? Just, one of the little things you would never think of, when our buildings were built, the majority of them have three outlets in the room. A classroom, three outlets.
Where are all the kids going to charge their cell phones?
Can't even say the number.
You have stuff that is, right, you have power strips and different, and, and, you know, so we have these huge panels that we're using for, for teaching. The teacher has their computer and monitor, and, and it's like, where does everything get plugged in to run?
Yeah.
And it's little things like that.
Not so little, but, yeah.
And not so cheap.
Right.
So I just, those are going to be some of the things that will start percolating up here as we go through this as well.
And none of that's part of the long-term facilities maintenance?
You're not replacing it. It would be an add. So we could do this through our operations budget, and by about 2,100, we should be done with all of our classrooms.
Cool.
I, yeah, I did not miss a clause.
I mean, if you realize how many classrooms we have and how, you know, how expensive and the, doing little things like that, I, it's.
And the example you can see in the state of Minnesota is what's happening at the Capitol with their renovation.
Yeah.
It was just not built for the work, the constituents that want to come and engage. It wasn't built for that.
Right.
They're all in little cubbies.
And I guess the only, and I think I heard this, Stacy, the only ask right now in terms of input is making sure that you have a rich representation from our community beyond admin, BLT, staff, athletics, you know? We have families that have different ways of plugging into the schools and, and if we limit input just from, you know, I don't know if they're the, the standard groups, but, you know, our, our, our school community is more rich than some of what you just listed.
True. And, and the, we're looking at inviting portions of our community for like our athletics, because they actually use the majority of that space. The, the experience that our parents have inside the buildings, for the most part during the instructional day is fairly limited.
And Project Kids, because they use, they actually have to use the entrances, their kids, so yeah, that's just one group. We're going to expand it to other community, but.
I, I want to be cautious. We'll, we'll do, I'm more likely we'll do something online. I, I just, because the feedback that I am getting from our principals is like, okay, so how, how is this received? And it's like, well, as staff, we do everything we can to be very welcoming at the front door with folks. And, and folks are trusting us with their best child. And so the, it's the experience in which people are having with people. I'm not so sure that our, some of our community members are picking up on what's going on in the classrooms or what that looks like. But I'll work with Aaron, we'll try to open something up, because if somebody says, hey, here's some things that we're, we're looking at.
Well, and I guess, you know, my point is there are lots of different type of parent volunteer groups, right, that are engaged, beyond boosters.
Like the PTOs?
PTOs, the family groups, there are boosters for other activities that are not athletic.
See, and we're, well, where I would roll them in would be when our design team starts working and coming up with options, is reaching out to the different communities and saying, okay, here are, here's what we're addressing, here's some of the different options, give us that input at that point in time. I, I mean, it's a, it's, for me, it's a big ask as far as what the needs are for our buildings. I think the folks that use them the most often are able to identify that to get us started.
Sure.
And I think that parents who have opinions on that have already shared them with the admins and.
I, I just want to be respectful of time, because once we do start in this process, I don't want people to say, well, I already gave you input, now what do you want? Well, I need your input on the important stuff.
And they get their.
Right.
Hopes up for.
So another example, because I've been on several of these in my career. So another example, because I've been on several of these in my career, when it comes to playgrounds, yeah, to work with students, what's your vision? The way they play is very different from the way I played. I'm glad I survived the way I played.[1657.13][1657.13](laughter) Safety was not a big issue.
We're glad you survived.
But that's the design team. So that's when it came in, let's see what the children, what they really want and how they're using it. And of course, we tell them, safety. So I see that's the design team process. You'll have a lot more. So thanks for that.
I was going to just say that seek the input of the communities or groups that rent our schools and facilities too, because they might have a different experience. Does they pay to utilize our buildings? Maybe they would have some input. I mean, they'd, they'd be a unique, different audience.
And that, yes. And I'll work with Kyle on that. That's one of the places like for our Marass Center that came up.
Marass Center upgrades.
Couple of, couple of other places that came up is...
The groups that use it, oh, yeah.
Well, it's gym space for, from our community rentals and also our athletic fields. So those, those place, those have been moved forward already.
Okay, cool. Yeah, because I was thinking of like, even like, because we host the South of the River Powo and, and stuff.
All right. Good discussion. This concludes our work session. Next on our agenda, we will move to a closed session to discuss Superintendent Dr. Battle's mid-year evaluation as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D dot O5 subdivision 3A. Is there a motion to close the meeting at this time?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson, seconded by Director Mickelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The meeting is now closed and will move to the Human Resources Conference Room. Having no further agenda items after the closed session, we will not return to the dais this evening.